95% of the people were appalled by the idea.[649.44-650.52][S23] We don't understand it.[650.60-655.52][S23] I have so many neighbors that don't even have driveways, or if they have driveways,[655.60-659.44][S23] it's just a single car can barely squeeze into it.[659.84-661.24][S23] And I don't see the reason for it.[661.32-666.44][S23] I understand for the snow removal, to clear it off, clear off the streets, but, but this[666.52-671.36][S23] one just doesn't make any sense to me, and I want to tell you that.[671.44-673.44][S23] I don't like it, and I don't understand it.[674.04-679.72][S23] One of the people commented on Facebook that it would get all the renters from next door[679.80-682.24][S23] to stop parking in front of our house.[682.32-685.24][S23] But I don't think that's going to happen, because I don't think that they're going to[685.32-688.24][S23] have a place to park, they're just going to have to buy a permit.[688.32-691.84][S23] So it's taking a renter and making their life a little less happy.[693.84-695.56][S23] And then, of course, there's the utilities.[695.64-701.64][S23] I saw two lawn trucks on my street yesterday, it was trash day, and I wondered about them,[701.72-706.16][S23] or having somebody come to my house to deliver anything, is there a problem, or to come
And note a couple of other, I think, important things that are good for context. Naturally, I think we all being impacted by COVID, the projects that are mentioned that are underway. Netflix were slowed, but now we're able to run much faster, especially if people return to work and workforces. So I think that's a really positive sign. You know, in all of that work being done, we're going to see tremendous progress, we believe, in Q3 and in Q4. And I would echo the comment that in Patrick raised some really good points about wanting to see the market thrive. We actually share that. The understanding is that you have to make sure it's a, you don't turn the volume up too high because it's hard to turn it down later. Right? So I think with an opportunity to see the projects that are underway, give them an opportunity to thrive. Let the market thrive with the locations, with those licenses as is. You can always turn it up. And frankly, I think it gives a better opportunity to understand how much you turn it up by. Right? So if you have two licenses now or two licensees, two locations, then you can say maybe go to four and go to six. Versus sort of, you know, opening it too high, creating potential market saturation and then create failure in the market. We all want to see it thrive for the great city of Mount Clemens. So I would just note those additional things, especially that also creates an opportunity to assess other options such as micro, things like that, because ton of zoning issues and things that come into play for that. And then you have retail and industrial areas. So want to know all those aspects. Again, fully supportive of hoping these locations remain number as is and give this opportunity, this market an opportunity to really thrive. So with that, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Are we back to Angela? Okay, Angela? Technology is great when it works. Yeah. Okay, Angela, we can't seem to get an audio from you. So do you want to turn on your camera and see if you can troubleshoot that really quick? If not, we're going to have to move on. Okay. We're sorry that we weren't able to catch your comments. Hopefully you can, at the end of the meeting, we have another opportunity for public participation. We'll go ahead and move on to Agenda Item 7. Administrative responses, are there any for this meeting?
No ma'am.
Okay, Agenda Item 8, Approval of Minutes. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion approved the City Commission, regular City Commission meeting minutes for June 21st, 2021.
Support.
Is there any discussion or questions? Okay, roll call please.
Fournier.
Yes.
Good now.
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes.
Crapp.
Yes.
Mensah.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Moving on to general business. Item A, Marijuana Business Ordinance Discussion. We'll go ahead and want to open discussion? Is that what we did last time since we don't have a motion quite yet? So does anyone?
I did supply a sample motion, but I would suggest in this case it might be appropriate to discuss first. Because it's not what I would call a hard recommendation.
Well, no, I think what we did last time was have a motion to open discussion on the ordinance. With the subject of...
Is it just a marijuana business ordinance?
Right, I would just say that.
A motion to discuss the marijuana business ordinance.
Support.
Okay. Roll call please.
Good now.
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes.
Crapp.
Yes.
Mensah.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you. When the city attorney prepared and submitted his sample draft of marijuana business ordinance, his cover letter identified four significant areas for future discussion of this ordinance. The mean, what he thought were the key elements, were the key changes. We've been discussing those one meeting at a time. And on June 7th, we talked about outdoor growing. The city commission voted not to allow it in the proposed ordinance if it's adopted. On June 21st, we talked about who should be making the decisions of application. If the ordinance is adopted and the commission determined the city commission should make that decision, not a separate committee. For tonight's meeting, I'm proposing that we discuss how many authorized establishments should be allowed. The proposed ordinance as drafted by the city attorney maintains the same number of authorized establishments as in the current medical marijuana facilities ordinance and creates a preference for co-location of recreational establishments with authorized medical marijuana facilities. The numbers right now that we have indicated we will allow in the existing ordinance are for Class A grower, which is a 500 plant grower, one. For Class B growers, which is up to 1,000 plants, one. For Class C growers, which is 1,500 plants, one location uncapped licenses, including excess marijuana grower as applicable. For processor, we allowed two. For provisioning center or retail establishment, we allowed two. For safety compliance location, we allowed two. And for secure transporters, we allowed two. What's actually been authorized so far is one Class C grower, same location, also has a processor and a provisioning center. Permit. And we have another permit that's been issued to a separate provisioning center. One of those is very well along in terms of construction. You heard from the people working in, on the second one, who say that they are progressing. Wasn't aware of any real progress on it up to now, but we'll see.
Okay. Would anyone like to start, like to start the discussion on this? Where everyone's kind of, everyone's feeling on this one?
I'll go.
Okay.
I believe that we should have two separate ordinances. I believe that these are two different laws, recreational or adult use and medical, with two different sets of language, and we should have two different ordinances for it. If you look at these, the little chart here that Mr. Johnson just talked about, when you say Class A, 500 plants, well, the adult language says 100. When you say Class B, 1,000 plants, the adult language says 500. When you say Class C, 1,500, the adult language actually says 2,000. And if we're talking about retail establishments, there is nothing here today that wants to talk about micro business. A micro business is 150 plants and they can only cultivate and sell product from these specific 150 plants. If we're going to talk about the number of permits, we should have a conversation about micro businesses also. In addition, Mr. Buckman brought up a question.
It's next to me.
In addition, Mr. Buckman brought up a question for me that I have. If the original permit holder has added a partner or changed ownership in some way, does that invalidate the, or change the original permit in some way? So those are my concerns and questions at this point.
Well, just to kind of clarify, we have, we received a list of the topics when we began this and micro grows our next, next meeting's topic. Just so we, just so we're clear that we are addressing that, that topic. And also, we agreed that we would keep to the discussion of each topic. Not that we can't ask questions, but we would discuss what we, what the designated topic of today is, which is number of licenses. So just to clarify.
And again, if we are talking about the number of licenses and the number of permits, we are remiss in not discussing micro businesses at this point. Unless next week, when we discuss, or not, two weeks from now, we discuss micro businesses, we want to come back and change the number of permits here.
So are we talking about the number of permits just for medical or for combined?
Medical are in place.
Correct.
The recreational is proposed, but the recreational and in the ordinance, there is the charter that shows both medical and recreational. The proposed ordinance has the same number of recreational licenses as we had for medical, which is two in the significant categories. Okay? So, and the reason for that is in the commission under the, when we were doing the medical marijuana ordinance, was rather insistent that they wanted it limited. And obviously, it's up to you how many you want to authorize. You could authorize 100 recreational if you want to. But we started with the two because that's what the medical had.
And those two that are in the current ordinance would be the, basically, the two that are out there? Or two additional recreational?
No, no.
Two that are out there?
Right now, there's two. And in the ordinance, it states a preference for co-location, which means the recreational would be co-located with the existing medical. And that's not a unique concept despite some of the things you've heard here today. LaPierre has that preference, East Lansing and Arbor Center line all have that preference in their ordinance.
Does it leave areas in township too?
Probably. So if you want more, that's fine. If you don't want that preference, that's fine. This was submitted as a draft.
Right, I understand. So we're just going to get it on table, what's in there. So in this would, the current ordinance as proposed would include recreational and medical?
The medical's already there.
There. It would add on recreational.
And the idea, let me just add one quick thing. The idea that somehow the medical has gone away is totally specious. The medical is incorporated into this ordinance.
Correct.
So the salient points under medical are all still in this ordinance.
Understand.
And that also is not a unique proposal, that you combine both into one marijuana business ordinance. We're not the first community that has suggested that or adopted it.
And I guess that I'm failing to see a reason. I'm trying to come up with that reason, but I can't come up with a reason why you would separate it. If recreational is available with no medical card or whatever, why go through, unless your insurance is going to cover it, which I don't think most insurances do cover it right now, why, what you gain by having them separate?
The tax situation is different between the two classes.
Taxes for sales tax or?
The excise tax on it.
But you're not losing that under our proposed ordinance. You still have medical.
No, but if somebody's coming in and buying X quantity under the medical, they'll pay less taxes than if they buy it under the recreational.
And I think there's like a, I mean, if we're talking about why you would do medical, why would you purchase medical to recreational? I think there's a potency difference. Okay, no, I'm lying. I thought that was the case.
But with the laws changed, it seems like recreational is up and coming more.
Oh, for sure.
I think it's here.
I believe, I've heard that the medical marijuana cards, like the cardholders have, has decreased by two thirds. Because, but some people, anyway.
I just wanted to make sure we all understand the difference here, so that...
But that we are addressing it. All the medical rules, all the medical laws are in this ordinance. And they're being addressed. We're just now having the recreational aspect of that as well.
Right. So Commissioner Mensah, is there a reason that you want to cite? Or can you help me understand why you want them separate?
Because as I read to you a few minutes ago, the different classes, there are different numbers in the classes for how many do you grow? So if we adopt what's in here in front of us, we are not adopting the full recreational ordinance. In addition, there are some, you know, minor language changes, you know, language differences here and there. As Mr. Johnson pointed out, the, you know, the taxes is one. I just think that to be clear and to follow both laws, we need to have them separate. And if there's a difference between what we can grow in Class A, 500 plants, well, under adult, you cannot grow 500, you can grow 100. But in Class C, we say 15, but in adult use, the law says 2,000. So it's completely different.
But the point of the ordinance is that if I have a medical marijuana permit from the city and a license from the state, I am limited to those numbers.
Right.
If I have a recreational permit from the city and a recreational license from the state, I can then operate under those other.
Those are not included in the ordinance that's in front of me. Right here, this, right here, not here?
It spells out in the ordinance the, what the license, what the equivalent license is under medical versus the equivalent license under recreational. It spells that out.
It might have been helpful if that was attached. Well, our question.
It's in the ordinance.
It might have been helpful if that was attached to this document.
Attached to what?
It was.
It is attached under a link.
I assume everybody got the draft ordinance. That was months, a couple of months ago, which prompted all of these separate meetings.
And it's linked for here? It's linked into the document.
Is that the same one? No, in the agenda tonight.
It's, yes, it's a hyperlink in the agenda. It's blue. And you hit, if you click it, it goes to the medical marijuana facilities ordinance, City of Mount Clemens, 2.20.110.
Well, again, I don't want to complain again about the layout of these packets, but I see it now, thank you.
Okay. Perhaps I'm a little thick-witted here, but, so the people that currently have the two medical permits that are out there, the ordinance wouldn't automatically give them a recreational?
No, it is a preference.
They get a preference, but they could apply for it. We could, and we can give them the recreational or not. And that leaves two licenses for recreational that would be available?
No.
No.
No, there's only two in, in... The only license that has any significance is the provisioning license, okay? And the retail establishment. Because as we found under medical, we only have one application to grow, to process, to do anything else. I don't anticipate you're going to see any more under this scenario. You're going to, all the applications are going to probably be to have a provisioning, which is a provisioning center under medical and it's a retail establishment under recreational. And we have two medical. They're done, assuming they fulfill the conditions. They're, they're done. We are proposing two recreational retail establishments, which is the provisioning center under medical. And if they are given, the medical are given a preference, then that will take those two recreational licenses. And you still have two of the other types, even though we don't anticipate you're going to get
Any applications.
Any applicants. The entire ballgame is, is all retail establishments everywhere. That's what all the litigation's about, that's what all the fighting's about. And I would point out one other thing while we're on the topic. The suggestion relative to social equity, to citizen preference, et cetera, that is what is currently under attack on every ordinance that's been adopted in different communities. City of Detroit had, has a significant social, social equity component in their ordinance. They've been sued in federal court, it's love versus the city of Detroit. Judge Friedman entered a preliminary injunction in that case and opined that he assumed that that would be unconstitutional. And the reason that they are talking about those type of preferences, there are preferences in ordinances, each point, just remove the preference for vacant buildings. There's all kinds of different preferences that have been suggested and adopted in some ordinances. And what the courts are saying, at least preliminarily, is that it violates the section of the ordinance that says that if a municipality provides a limit on the number of establishments, then the municipality shall decide among competing applicants, when you have more applicants than which, which you've authorized, based upon, by a competitive process intended to select applicants who are best suited to operate in compliance with this act. And what the courts have, there's been an injunction issued in Oakland County against the city of Berkeley, who had a number of different items in their, to consider in terms of who they were going to grant a permit to, such as energy efficiency, revitalizing vacant property. He issued a preliminary injunction against the city of Berkeley. Similarly, as I said, Judge Friedman in federal court has issued an injunction, a preliminary injunction against Detroit. And the rationale on all those, and there's one in Traverse City as well, all those decisions is what does any of that have to do with selecting an applicant who is best suited to operate in compliance with this act? That is what is happening with, with all those type of things to add in terms of making determination. It's supposed to be competitive and based solely on who's the best one to operate.
Which is still vague and can still...
Well, it's vague, but you're going to have to justify, you know, I mean, like, for example, if, if, if there's a preference for the medical marijuana permit, conditional permit holders, I think that can be justified in court based upon, here's what they've done. You know, assuming they get up and operating, obviously.
Right, sure.
You know, that would, that's potentially. I think at least that has, has some rational connection to who's best able to operate. If somebody is operating and, and operating lawfully, I think a strong argument can be made that that gives them a leg up.
So we're back to, if we're going to decide the number of permits tonight, we need to talk about the micro businesses because that requires a permit?
No, it doesn't. No, it doesn't. There is no statutory, the ordinance is either going to allow micro businesses or it isn't going to allow micro businesses. It's same thing as it's going to allow consumption on the premises or it isn't going to allow consumption. The, in those three items are up for discussion down the road. That's the next meet.
If you're looking at Item C here on the chart that he provided, provisioning center, retail establishment and micro business, would all be the same thing?
If you, if you want to discuss micro businesses, fine. The key items are the, are the retail and the provisioning.
But I do see the point. I mean, if micro businesses are separate establishments and they are, wouldn't they need a permit?
Not, not totally because they're not a full-time operation. A micro business is defined under the act. Trying to find it. Can't find it right now. But it allows someone to grow, to have an establishment where they grow, and I believe it's 100 plants.
150.
150. They grow 150 plants and they can sell it. They can distribute it. So it's a combination of a mini grow and a retail.
You don't need a permit?
Well...
You need a state license.
Yeah, you're going to have to be approved by the state. Okay? But we will, at some point, I am not positive if we have to give a permit or not. Okay?
We also, with, and that's, are you, with micro businesses, I mean, can we limit how many we?
Yeah, I believe so.
Yeah, so for example, if we were going to have two full retail establishments that would do both, you know, medical and adult use, we've already got those issued at this point. If we wanted to add some micro businesses because they are smaller and they might fit into different areas and it might bring more revenue and might bring us another permit fee and it might satisfy needs, you know, other needs of, you know, residents or, or, you know, consumers who want to operate on a small business, I think we need to figure out, do we want to add two? Do we want to add one? Do we want to add none?
According to Mr. Murray, there was no need.
I think you have to also keep in mind, at the present time, you have a very limited area where any medical, any marijuana business can be located. So it's primarily industrial. And there was a small, I think it's a general commercial, trying to remember.
General business now.
General business. Those are the only areas that anything could be located in. So I suppose if they could find locations and you authorized a number of them, you could have some micro businesses. I don't know how it's going to be profitable for anyone, but if you think it's important, put it in. But I also don't believe, and I haven't researched it, but I don't believe for a micro business that there's a $5,000 permit fee.
Well, that was just a number that we used in the other one. But it says here, what is a Michigan micro business license? It says a micro business license allows the holder to grow up to 150 plants, process those plants into a variety of cannabis extracts and edibles, and sell those products directly to the consumer. So there is some kind of a licensing. It also says they cannot sell to other licensees. They can only sell directly to consumers over the age of 21.
Does it say they have to go through the safety checks like the other people?
I believe so, yeah.
Well, not from what you just read, it said they can grow it and process it.
Right, they can grow it and process it, but I think Mayor Crapp's point is, will they have to have security? Will they have to have, you know, a safe? Will they have to have, you know, if they're growing, will they have to have
Their product tested?
Air, you know, quality control, things like that. And, you know, and be, have it be tested, you know, as a processor.
But that's the states regulating that, right?
Well, the state regulates the testing and all that stuff, yes.
So the question is?
So the question is, if there is, if we decide that micro processors, distributors, whatever, our provisioners are, we are going to allow that, are they subject to all of the restrictions, safety wise, permit wise, maybe a different amount, as, and location preferences as well, I mean, location requirements? If, if they're not, I can't imagine that we authorize any. But if they are, then, and we are thinking of doing it, then it seems like we might have gotten, we should decide that first.
If we're gonna allow micro businesses?
Yes.
They would be obligated to operate pursuant to our zoning classification, that's clear.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but didn't the state of Michigan, didn't they define that any grow operations had to be in industrial? Or is that wrong?
I believe that's correct. And of course, our medical ordinance provides that. It can only, growing can only be in industrial, industrial one or industrial two. That's the only place growing can be. And the only commercial zoning allowed for a provisioning center to be located, not a grow, not a processor, not a transporter. It only allowed for a provisioning center. And under the recreational ordinance, it would allow for a retail establishment, nothing else.
So how can a micro grow fit in, I can't, other than any, anything industrial, right? I mean, that's where they would have to be located.
My opinion would be they would have to be located in an industrial zone area.
And you have to grow it if you're a micro.
I just need to be brought up to speed a little bit. We have two licenses, correct? Are that provisional licenses?
Permits.
That would be, that would be the Gibraltar Center?
Oh, yeah.
For medical, right.
And this operation that's going to go on Grospec, is that correct?
Right.
Right now, they would be, will they be retail? I mean, I, I understand Gibraltar is going to be a grow operation. Is that going to be a grow operation on Grospec also?
No.
No.
I, I also understand that, and I'm not sure whether it's county by county, where you would divide between medical and recreational, is that correct? When you go in?
They, those, that seems to be in a state of flux.
Okay.
Okay.
So that's not set in stone at this point?
Well, I think, I think there, what happens is that the statutes, the medical statute and the recreational statute don't cover all, all possibilities and all eventualities. The LARA adopts rules and regulations. And I believe their rule, they have adopted a rule that would separate the, the retail operations.
Okay.
Okay? But I also understand that that is somewhat, as I said, in flux, that may not last forever.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Can this be tabled into after the meeting for micro business?
Well, I'm looking at the statute right now, okay? And it says, this is the LARA, this is the state of Michigan, "The department shall issue the following state license types: marijuana retailer, marijuana safety compliance facility, marijuana secure transporter, marijuana processor, marijuana micro business, Class A marijuana grower, Class B marijuana grower, and Class C marijuana grower." So they will be licensed by the state, so then they would have to be permitted by the city.
So then we do, so then we do have to decide if we're going to issue any permits for a micro business?
Sure.
Even though we haven't approved a permit for a micro business, right?
You know what?
We haven't approved an ordinance for a micro business?
It's in this ordinance.
So would we be, so for...
It's in there, I believe there's a blank for micro businesses in this ordinance, a zero. You know, so it's...
What is the state of the, of the two licenses that we have out, right? There, obviously, neither one of them are operating at this point.
The one, Jars Inc., which is located on Grospec, they have built a building, the building is fairly well completed. And their intention, as I understand it, is they, they hope to be open by September at the latest. Gibraltar, I have no clue.
I think he just said probably late Q4 of this year, Q1?
Yeah.
They might be ready?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we don't know.
We don't know.
We haven't seen much progress.
We don't know, and, and I, for a long time, we were under the impression that, that a lot of their forward movement was going to be dependent on outdoor growing, so. In light of what the commission decided two weeks ago.
Or a viable source of electricity, which...
Right, right.
I don't know that that's gonna change, but whatever.
And I don't know if Brian has anybody's contact to communicate, the building department relative to any...
I think he said that there in the words of contacting the voting department, Randy, in his comments.
No.
So do you want to throw one out there and move from there?
On the other side?
We'll need to, first, we'll need to close discussion and then we can have somebody present a, a motion to, you know, include them, table it, what, you know, all that kind of stuff. Now, I mean, if the commission feels as though they can't make a discussion, make a decision without further information on micro grows, I mean, there is a, we could table it and talk about it all again. It seems like we talked about both today, but...
I think, if I could add, I think the commission knows what a micro business is at this point. And if they want to include micro businesses, they gotta be able, you know, they can decide that. I don't, I don't know why we would need a further discussion relative to micro businesses.
So then I'll throw it out there. I would like to see us add...
But you gotta make a motion.
We have to close the discussion.
Let's close discussion and then...
I, I thought we were talking about the number of facilities.
Oh, you want to still discuss, okay, yes, please, go ahead.
The number of facilities.
I thought you were just throwing a motion out there, like, wait. Okay, go ahead.
No, but we have to decide the number of facilities and I think that's going to take some discussion. So I, I, I would like to see us add two micro business licenses and keep to the industrial area as Mr. Murray explained to us. That's what I would like to see.
So keep everything else the same in terms of provisioning centers, grow operations, all of that?
Yeah, not, not, you know, 200 feet away from a school or, you know, this many from a resident, whatever, all the, all those...
And you would like to add two micro business?
I just want to be clear, so we do not have a meeting planned in the future for micro business discussion?
We do currently.
What we're saying right now, we're going to figure it out.
There are other items on that evening as well.
Other items besides micro business. There's a...
On premises consumption and temporary events?
Yep, and temporary event, whatever the term is for somebody who puts on temporary events on the statute.
So we, unfortunately, Ron, we won't be getting out of a meeting. I had to do it. But we, yes, we, we do, we are scheduled, that technically is a part of the, on that discussion list. So does anybody have any thoughts on that, what Commissioner Menzger is proposing with the two micro businesses?
And you did say to be located only in industrial, correct?
Yes.
To follow all the current...
To follow all the current zoning guidelines and safety precautions that we have currently established.
I can deal with that. I think it, it kind of accomplishes two things. I think that that's fair. As long as it's in accordance with all the other safety requirements.
Don't throw anything at me, Commissioner Campbell. So now you want a motion, since nobody wants to talk?
I want one to close discussion.
Motion to close the discussion for marijuana business ordinance.
Support.
Okay, roll call, please.
Good now.
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes.
Crop.
Yes.
Menzger.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Okay, so no.
I make a motion that we add two micro businesses to our proposed marijuana business ordinance. And leave all of the permits the same, right? Or do we don't need that in there?
Because we have another recommendation for this.
Artic.
Two, two different areas.
Okay, we're having two different motions, okay.
Okay, what do you want me to add?
Well, there's a, there's a suggested motion as part of your package, which is relative to the permits for the other categories.
And then you can add?
But she's adding the two.
Where it's, so we're gonna have two motions?
Or we can have two motions or just add it to this one?
Add the micro businesses to that.
Just add, Commissioner Menzger, I would just add at the end, in addition.
Because I was gonna say, that's not in here.
No, I would, I would just add it in.
All right, I move to propose we add two micro businesses to the proposed marijuana business ordinance and it will adhere to the current medical, the current zoning and safety precautions. Just tell me what you want me to say, damn it.
You move that the proposed marijuana business ordinance, if adopted, should provide for the same number of authorized establishments as is in the current medical marijuana facilities ordinance. And...
And?
Shall include two micro business establishments.
Okay, let's try this for the fourth or fifth time. I make a motion that the proposed marijuana business ordinance, if adopted, should provide for the same number of authorized establishments as the current medical marijuana facilities ordinance and shall include two micro businesses.
Support.
I need a drink now.
Is there any further discussion or questions or anything on this matter? Okay. Roll call, please.
Hammond.
Yes.
Crop.
Yes.
Menzger.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Good now.
Yes.
All right, we'll move on. And we're gonna go ahead and move to agenda item 9B, contract for the ice arena management. I will entertain a motion.
I move to approve the ice arena management contract between the city and RT Arena Management and to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the agreement.
Support.
Okay, Mr. Johnson?
Mr. Mason is online. Patrick, he's under his wife's name.
Hey, great evening, Mayor, Council, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay. Unfortunately, Nick cannot be at the meeting and I did talk to Nick earlier this evening and he is the man on call tonight, so he's driving, he's driving the Zamboni tonight. So he did ask for me to say a few things. First and foremost, very much appreciates the opportunity to, once again, to manage the operations at the facility. And he's really looking forward to enhancing the, the program that he currently has. And probably most importantly, he's gonna be working with the city, Mr. Johnson, and with our marketing team and trying to enhance additional programs and the events that he has going on. Recently, real quick, he has just brought into the arena a new hockey organization that came out of Lakeland. It's a very well-known organization. I've heard of it, I'm aware of it. And for him to be able to bring that organization to run our organization, which was the Mount Clemens Wolves, was a major achievement for Nick and RT management. Last, I'd like to add that Nick, he has complied with all the previous agreements and contracts that he has with the city. As you know, back several months ago during the pandemic, he did ask for line of credit. He did use it a couple of times. He has repaid all the, both the, he used it for a couple of invoices and both, he has repaid the city and has made the first payment on the bond indenture back here a few weeks ago. And so he's very current with his finances, finance, the finance, right now, the finance of the arena going very good. He's extremely busy. And like I said, he appreciates the opportunity to represent the city. So with that being said, he was happy with the, very happy with the contract that Mr. Murray and Mr. Ernoff, Miller, Campfield has proposed for him.
Okay, does anyone have any questions for Mr. Mason? Commissioner Menzger, go ahead.
I'm looking here at section 3.03, item D. We've written in something about a, a written report to the city at least monthly. I'd like to know if those city, if those monthly reports will be given to commission at the same time we get all of our statistics and other monthly reports?
Uh, yeah, Don?
Yes.
Yeah, they will be. He provide, right now, Commissioner, he provides a monthly report to me, probably one week after the end of the month with a balance bank statement. And we have, we have put in a lot of time, Mary Ann from my staff, myself, and a young lady from Plamara into bringing his financial records up to date, and so far it's looking very good.
Thank you for that, Mr. Mason. I know that they were having some accounting difficulties and I'm very happy that you said that they've repaid all the monies owed to the city and they've made the first bond payment. That's a really encouraging first step. I had a question too about capital expenditures over 1.5 million. So that, so that will require city commission approval or just city approval? Or, you know, city manager approval?
What, what section are you in?
I'm looking at, it is section three, duties and authorities of manager, and it's under section 3.01 at the top of the next page. It, it says, let me get my glasses now.
It's $1,500, not a million five.
Okay, all right, that makes more sense. Okay, perfect. And then...
I'm sure then it'll...
And then I just had one other thing. On the contract here, it's on page six, it says, terms of agreement... On the contract here, it's on page six, it says, terms of agreement, the term of this agreement shall be for a five-year period commencing on the sixth day of July, that would be today. Is that, no problems?
That's no problem.
Okay.
You could sign it a month from now, and the effective date could be July the 6th.
Okay. Then I'm good.
Does anyone else have questions? Okay, roll call, please.
Hammond.
Yes.
Krapp.
Yes.
Menzger.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Good now.
Yes.
Okay, Agenda Item 9C, M.DOT stormwater contract and resolution. I'll entertain a motion.
I move to adopt a attached resolution and amended contract between the Michigan Department of Transportation and the City of Mount Clemens, M.DOT contract number 21-5259, and to authorize the city manager and public service director to sign and enter the agreement.
Support.
She was first.
Mr. what?
In 2017, the city entered into a similar agreement to this. This actually was just an amendment to the agreement. Additional M.DOT-owned properties that are running through a combined sewer system, and so we're just increasing that expense to them. So the amended agreement was attached for review, and the resolution is part of M.DOT's procedures for us to be able to build them appropriately.
Any questions? Commissioner Fournier?
How did you find it?
We're working on some other properties in the surrounding townships and the county, and found out that this was actually owned by M.DOT, not the county.
So to be clear, we get to charge the state, and they will give us money?
Right. Yes.
Excellent. Always.
That doesn't happen.
Excellent. Anyone else?
Yeah, my question just was, is, I just wondered how the percentages, you know, were decided. We were going to charge them 2.13% of the expenses for the wastewater treatment plant, and then the city is then, you know, 97.87%. I just wondered how those percentages were chosen.
It's based upon the actual cost to treat the stormwater.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right, roll call, please.
Krapp.
Yes.
Menzger.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Good now.
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes.
Agenda Item 9D, utility rates. I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the retail water and sewer rates, wholesale water and sewer rates, and services fees recommended by the city's consulting engineer in the attached documents.
Support.
This is also Mr. Mason's report, but we've also got, I believe, two representatives from AEW available on the line as well. We'll start with Cliff.
Yes, Mayor, Council, this was, this was a joint work agreement with the city engineer from AEW and his assistant. This is a project we had begun about four or five months ago, about the time we sat down and started working on the budget. And what we wanted to do, we did not increase rates last year. And again, mostly because we weren't sure what direction, you know, the pandemic was going to take the city, we didn't know the financial impact that was going to have on our residents, on the businesses. And so whereas realistically you should be increasing rates to keep up with, at least with the cost of inflation, or with the increases in your, in salaries and the wages paid to employees, we decided to table it, and all for good reason. All right, so beginning this past spring, I contacted Kyle Sedell, who's the city engineer, so we got to start the program. We must have to take a look at our rates. Bottom line, we provide the probably most valuable service that we provide to our residents is water and sewer. And we have to at least be sure that we keep up with the operating cost of running both those facilities. And capital costs, you know, that's going to be a different topic with a different approach, and probably is going to take many work sessions with Mr. Johnson, Mayor Council, to sit down, how do we approach some of these major capital outlays that we're going to be looking. Right now, the facilities are operating, I don't want to say okay basically, but we haven't seen anything that, a major concern. But all the time, the director from the water sewer plant, Ms. Bertrand, calls me all the time, Cliff, if I have extra money, let me know. So he has no problem about updating the facility. Now, on the operating side, AEW recommended a 3% increase, which when I received it here a couple of weeks back, I was very pleasantly surprised and very happy, because I know, if you've been seeing in the paper just recently, what the city tried has been impacting on several of the communities who are part of that, part of their water and sewer system. So I believe the 3% was very much, you know, very surprised, but very much of a welcome rate increase. And real quick, Kyle or Ashley, are you, are you there? Are you available?
Ashley's available.
Hi, Ash.
Hi.
Can you just, a few minutes, how you came to that 3%, please?
For the water and sewer rates?
Yes, please.
I believe it's, it's 4.5%. That was option three.
Okay.
We just look at the budgeted expenditures and revenue projected by the city, and then also look at the past three years of usage by the city, by all the users. And we break it down into, you know, different aspects, but basically you just look at the revenue, expenses, and the usage, and get to a projected rate that gets you close to your deficit and revenue, you know, being even. And that's what we proposed here for option three.
Okay, there's one, one other item there, I think is important for council to probably have to consider or to keep in mind, is that our water consumption has been decreasing for the last several years. And now, for this past fiscal year, it kind of leveled off. I was glad to see that. But going back, our consumption has gone down both on the residential and the commercial side. Obviously, with the, you know, with less consumption, our costs will be going up. It is something, it looks like it leveled off this year. Be interesting to see how it goes in this current fiscal year, and that, that may impact future rate increases or how we're going to approach the setting of rates. So wanted to be sure council was aware of that also.
Okay, questions for Mr. Mason, for AEW?
I want to be really clear about one point on this, though. This just affects the variable rate, right? This is just based on consumption. This does not, the fixed rate will be staying the same? Because, you know, there's two water amounts that you're charged, there's the fixed, and then there's, the second one is based on consumption. The fixed will stay the same?
Ashley, I believe the fixed is the same, correct?
No.
For option three, both your fixed and your variable rate are increased.
They are. How much was the fixed increase?
For water, it was increased from 2744 to 2796. And for sewer, it's increased from 2101 to 2238.
So is that included in the 4.5%?
Yes.
Okay, so I, then I do have an issue. The fixed rate, I mean, the consumption is one thing. If you use more water, you're going to pay more, and it is, it's modest. Though I will say that your average is, everyone that I checked, and I happen to be, have a few properties to check against, the average was higher, and none of them were families. So I guess I do have a problem with the fixed rate increasing.
Well, let me point out something here on this chart. Of the fiscal year '22 retail water and sewer rates, there's a mathematical error under the fixed service charge. If you look down underwater, under fixed service charge, it says option one, 2744, option two. If you look at option three, it says 2804. But then again, and that's 2.2%. You look at option three there, an increase of 4.5%, it says 2796. That number is false. That number should be actually 2868.
The 4.5% is not what's applied to each individual number, it's what the average increase will be.
Well, explain to me then, why a 2.2% increase is higher than a 4.5%?
Right here. That's a mathematical error. It has to be.
Ashley, can you see what she is referring to? In your column for fixed service charge per quarter on the water rate.
Yep.
Option two has a higher rate than option three.
Right, so for the, for the, being that 2804, if you look at the other rates, like the sewer fixed and then the commodity charges, there, the sewers are both a little bit lower. That option was to, you know, keep that a little bit lower. And like, you know, Mr. Johnson said, that percent increase is, is an average of the rate. So even though that 2804 does seem, you know, higher, the sewer rate is a little bit lower, and so is that both, the both sewer rates. So the average then is still lower overall. The third option, we tried to balance out the increase, you know, evenly across water and sewer, to come to that 4.5% to get your budget and deficit revenue, you know, close, as close as we could to zero.
It also seems to me that, let me just ask you, on the current year's budget, for the year that just closed, did we come in under or over in water?
We had excess funds.
Exactly, and so.
It was $600,000, I believe.
But in terms of operations, did we come in, we definitely had excess funds. I don't have the budget with me, but did we come in?
Yes, we did. Commissioner, you know, we're projecting a surplus in that income this year, not substantial. And again, you know, just so that, I want to go back to during the budget time when we talked, when we talked about water sewer funds, it's, the most important thing is, how much working capital do we have available? And I know you're, you're very familiar with that term. And so, you know, we do have money, we did have a surplus, and bottom line, what we tried to do is increase our working capital in the event that we do have something material happen, you know, at either one of the facilities. Now, would it be enough for something major? No, probably would not be, and we would have to take, may have to take a look at bond. But we, at this particular time, do not have a cash flow problem with either one. Do we have a surplus? To answer your question, yes, we have. Do we have a material amount of money? No, we do not.
Thank you. Given that, I don't know that we need to go to option three. Why don't we go to option two, which keeps the average at a little bit lower rate? We share the, if there is something major, it's going to be major, it's going to be capital, not operations. And I just think we have creep going on in between our property taxes right now, our water rates. I, for one, think maybe option two would be fairer at this point, given that we have a surplus.
Please keep in mind that this is what pays for capital.
I understand that, but we also know that those capital requirements there are not going to be covered by this.
That's true. That's true.
Mr. Johnson, go ahead.
I'm finished.
Okay. Go ahead.
So actually, what I would have liked to see is this separated out a little bit, because we've got several increases here. You've got the retail rates for residents, okay? And I'll tell you right now, I'm a hard no on that. But you also have the increase in the vector and the septic collar. I'm all, I'm all over that, yep.
True.
And then you've got a whole separate thing here of the rates that we're charging Clinton and Harrison. And those increases, for Clinton, 36.3%, and for Harrison, 28%, with, of course, as you noted, no, no increase for salvage because we have a contract. So to me, these are kind of like three separate votes.
Yeah, I, I agree. The other two I'm not as opposed to as the increasing the rates for the residents.
Let me look at our motion. And we can.
Can we separate the motions?
We would have to just.
Sure.
There's no reason why you couldn't.
Yeah, we can vote.
Nobody's made a motion.
Well, we did make a motion.
Did you make that?
Yeah, to open, right, so wouldn't we have to vote this down? We'd have to vote this down and then individually, because there is a motion on the table, and it would, the way it reads now.
Either that or amend the motion.
You can amend.
Or amend it, one of the two.
Why don't, why don't we amend it into three separate, separate?
Either that or just amend, you want to just take the retail out, right? I mean, the other two.
Yeah, we could just take the retail out.
Right. So just, you made the motion, right?
Just amend the motion to read the same except for retail.
I did.
And then you can make a separate one motion relative to.
Is that an amendment you're comfortable with, Commissioner Hammond, or Commissioner Fournier? Which one?
Someone.
Didn't want to read this one anyway, but nobody was reading it. So at this point, I move to approve.
You moved to amend.
I move to amend my original motion and change it to, I move to approve.
Sewer rates, wholesale water?
The wholesale water and sewer rates and services fees recommended by the city's consulting engineer in the attached documents. Just not included.
Who seconded, I'm sorry?
It was.
Hammond.
Hammond.
Okay, so the motion has been amended. Are you clear on what it is now?
Just deleted retail water and sewer rates.
Yep. Is everyone clear on what we're voting on, then? Are there further discussions on those two?
On the wholesale.
On the, well, the new, is there any further discussion on the amended motion?
No.
Good? Good. Okay, roll call, please.
Menzger.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Good now?
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes.
Krapp.
Yes. Okay. Now we can have another motion, we need another motion to then open up that discussion.
I make a motion that we open up discussion on the fiscal year '22 water and retail sewer rates.
Support.
Support.
Did you say retail? I'm sorry.
Yeah, water and retail sewer rates.
Okay.
Water and sewer rates.
So we have a support?
Yes.
Okay, roll call, please. I'm sorry, discussion. Sorry. Okay, go ahead, Commissioner, Menzger, since you.
I am a hard no on raising the rates for residents right now. I'm a hard no. I think that, you know, we have, you know, we play this game. One year we do taxes, the next year we do water, the next year we pick something else. And I'm tired of the game, so I'm a hard, I'm a hard no.
And your, your motion was to just discuss it, wasn't to approve?
Yes.
Okay.
Right, given that we already have a surplus and that I, I'm good with leaving them as we did as well in the budget. The budget, we had no increase. I mean, we just.
This increase is necessary to meet the budget.
But we did not propose raising the rates when we did the budget.
We didn't deal with the rates in the budget, but the numbers in the budget, this is necessary to meet those numbers.
But we do have a surplus.
You have a surplus in terms of operations. We are very much underfunded on capital.
I know we're underfunded on capital.
And, you know, basically, if we, if we don't start increasing these rates, we're saying that we're never going to be able to pay for any capital.
I would be, I could live with option two. That's kind of splitting the.
What was the rate for increase? Do we know what the rate increase for Great Lakes water?
I do not. I don't, I don't think it's consistent with every client either.
Yes, Commissioner.
Go to city trade, what they do, they have meetings, and where the various communities who members of the, that, they're, and every city's evaluating a different set of criteria, given the, you know, proximity, how much flow, how much would the peak demand, there's
There's many variables that are detract. Every city has its own rate. It could be an increase, decrease. They're measured in, each city is measured independently. I was part of that for many years.
I just wondered if there was a difference.
Impossible to see use, well, how they do it. Because every city has its own formula.
It would just be, I mean, most of our neighbors are on the Great Lakes water, correct?
I would believe so, yes.
So it would, it would be interesting to see what our neighbors' increase is and are they increased? Just so that we could, you know, it's, it's, I think it's a fair comparison.
It'd be very easy to do.
Except that we can't today.
Well, I mean, we can bring that part back at the next meeting.
If we do option two, we're going to split it, right? I mean, if there's, if we're projecting a $300,000 deficit this year and we do option two, we are at 163 and these numbers are budgeted numbers and they're based on averages. And there's so many, you know, room for movement and all this that, you know, it's, these are not absolutes. Like I said, every one that I looked at, the actual consumption was higher than is used here.
Well, if we're going to have micro businesses and Gibraltar growing, we might be selling water like crazy.
There you go. So I definitely, I, I would consider it number two. Anyone else?
I mean, nobody wants to raise rates, right?
No, I don't want to raise rates.
You see, I, I guess another thing I'm concerned about or confused about is it, Mr. Mason said it and it's here in our memo, the consumption is continuing to decline. I have our utility report from last, from last month. And actually, in January, in comparing 21 to 22, in January, we did have a, a decrease of about approximately $5 million in water production. In February, we increased by 6 million. In March, we increased by approximately 6 million. In April, we increased by approximately 7 million. And in May, according to this chart, we increased by 10 million.
He, he did mention that. He said that, you know, historically, we have.
This year, he said, I thought they were maintaining, but they're actually increasing.
Yeah. And, and the other interesting difference is, is that the wastewater treatment plant treatment volume actually went down. And do you know why? Because of the, of the precipitation rates. In January this year, we only had 1.1 inch of precipitation. Last year, in 2020, it was 3.77. So you're seeing a vast difference right there.
All this is, yeah, very close. I, I. Anybody else have any feelings on this?
Are you making a motion to do option two?
I mean, does everyone?
We have to close discussion.
I'd like discussion.
I just need a discussion before you make another.
Yeah, because we have a motion on, we would need to close.
I agree with you. I agree with you.
Going through the middle.
So therefore, I will now move.
We have to close discussion.
We have to close the discussion.
Close discussion.
Support.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Menzner?
Yes.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
Goodnow?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Krap?
Yes.
Okay. Now, go ahead. Commissioner Voorhees?
Well, no, that's.
Are you going to let me do this, Owen? So I'll go back to the original one that we. I move to approve the retail water and sewer rates.
For fiscal year 22.
For fiscal year 22, 20, yeah, 22, based on the rate increase of 2.2 percent as presented in option two of the table.
I second that.
Okay. Any discussion on that? Are we good? Okay. Roll call, please.
Menzner?
No.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
Goodnow?
No.
Hammond?
Yes.
Krap?
Yes. Agenda item nine E, consider ordinance to ban streaking park, street parking on garbage day. I'll entertain a motion. I'll entertain a motion?
Nobody wants to make that motion, right?
I'll have to ask three times.
Perhaps?
I move.
Go ahead.
I move to approve the introduction at first reading of the ordinance to prohibit, excuse me, to prohibit residential street parking during trash collection days and to set July 19th as the date for the second reading and adoption of the ordinance.
Support.
Okay. All right. Now we can discuss. Well, Mr. Johnson, go ahead.
Well, let me remind you that we did have a previous discussion on, on this back on May the 7th, when we presented several options for how this could be approached. And this was the approach the commission chose at that time, was to ban street parking on garbage day. So the commission directed the administration and the city attorney to prepare an ordinance which would do so. The purpose of this ordinance is to clear the street of parked cars to ease trash, trash collection and provide an opportunity for street work unencumbered by parked cars, including sweeping and plowing. I note in here that we're going to have to develop a, a permit system for dealing with residents who have no off-street parking available. We have not prepared anything in that regard yet because I wanted to see whether this was actually going to get approved. It would be my intention that, that we present something that's pretty cut and dried so that the clerk's office is not required to exercise a lot of discretion along the nature of, if you've got a driveway, you don't get a permit, period. Doesn't matter if you have more cars than fit in your driveway. The permit would probably be something that, that uses the alternate site approach on a morning and afternoon basis. So that if you've got a permit, you have to park on the even side in the morning and, and the odd side in the afternoon. And we'd leave the noon hour as, as free for either, either side. So it'd be like seven to 11 and one to 4:30. But that hasn't been drafted yet. The big concern that my staff has is, is with the permit process and how we decide who gets a permit. The sheriff's department is concerned about enforcement and about telling people where they can park when he's not sure they actually have an answer. And also about the number of violations and whether we're going to have the resources to adequately enforce the ordinance. We can, in addition to use sheriffs, as we can use our, our, our normal downtown parking people as well, but not something that we can do on a regular basis. It's basically just to, to do it for a heavy enforcement period to train people. Once people get used to this, it's really not that big of a deal. A lot of cities do it. But anyway, that's, that's where we're at. The question is whether you want to continue with this or not.
I would like to start off with comments. I think that this description is a little flawed. This ordinance, or this suggested ordinance, was born out of many, many complaints, not about ease of trash collection, but it was born out of many, many complaints about when we have leaf pickup and how when we have street, street sweepers and not being able to have a clear idea of when a street sweeper is going to come down your street. And we've asked many times, because we've received so many complaints, we've asked many times for there to be a solution to that, be it signs, be it parking on the odd, or end. And we've, we've had many discussions about how this needs to be, there needs to be a solution. It's not just, we can't continue this, we do it this way and this is the way we're going to keep doing it and residents should just get over it. And that has seemed to be the mantra in the past. And so we've looked at, how do other cities address this? And this was one way of how cities address it. Now, we have an interesting housing stock where some of our residents don't have driveways. And so obviously, that does need to be addressed in this, in this ordinance. But many people come to us and complain about snow removal and how their neighbors park on the street and so then their, their driveway gets plowed in or their, or in front of their house doesn't get cleared. Now, I understand that this ordinance also does not address if we have a big snow event. But many times, our crews have to do an initial plowing to make streets clearable, drivable, sorry, not, not a word, clearable. They have to, but then they come back and they do other cleanup throughout those times. And when they have cars, if you've ever driven a snowplow, which I have not, and nor do I want to, but I have high respect for the idea that you have to maneuver around all of these cars and that has to be difficult. It also does not look easy to drive a street sweeper and have to make maneuvers around these cars as well. I understand people's dislike for this ordinance. I mean, I, I'm not, I'm not in the business of telling people where to park and how to live their lives and all these things. I, it really, I have a lot of other things to, to do than want to attend to this. But we have to make a solution because we keep getting complaints and complaints and complaints about this same thing. And it's, it's not going to change if we don't come up with a solution. So I don't necessarily, you know, I understand their hesitancy to have to enforce this, but then come to me with this solution. I'm tired of, we just don't want to do this. That's, and that's where I'm at. When I read this description, I thought, ah, nobody wants to do this. And that really ticked me off because there's also no other solution. And that, and I don't think that's right. So that's my thoughts. Anyone else?
Yeah, I, so I'm in full agreement that we have to have these streets cleaned. By the way, the ordinance is written, it says parking on residential streets on trash day, you have to be off. Well, we all know the street sweeper is not going to come every week. So I think that the ordinance has to be written that, like, the first Monday of April and then maybe July or September, something that's going to be more realistic. Same thing the mayor said. I had people calling me, a lady called and said that she has people that look, park three cars next to her. So whenever the leaf, the street sweeper goes through, they go completely past her house and nothing happens. Same thing in the winter time. All their cars are out there, she gets plowed in. So the ordinance, I don't want to scrap this, you know, but we need to tailor this, so. And then another thing that, my neighbor called me and said, oh, I heard we're going to have to pay $100 to park in front of her house. That's not what the ordinance says. There's nothing in this ordinance that says you have to pay $100. It says it was $100. Fine, but you have the option of getting all these dispossessions for it. But we just can't continue on like the mayor said. We've got to come up with a solution. Now, closing on every single trash day every week, we know that's not going to be realistic. So obviously, we have to come, work on this ordinance to make it more realistic. So as it's presented right now, no, it's not realistic. But to completely get rid of it, I think it needs to be tabled, worked on, and then brought back with more realistic solutions.
I'm, personally, I think we could have a work session on this. I know, sorry, Commissioner Campbell. We could have a work session on this and we could meet with, we could have the DPS director who has a discussion and, with this and have some input into what is the solution? What is the solution for, what can we further, what can we further do? I, I mean, that's my opinion. I, I'm not, I, I don't think as this stands, it's going to be successful if, if it's adapted as it is.
Well, I would like to say that many decades ago, maybe, it was, at least 20, it used to be that you, the street sweeping was done on your garbage day. And so we had that in Mount Clemens at one point. I don't know why or when it stopped, probably in the days when we had to cut costs and we weren't going to be able to sweep every week. But I am so totally in agreement with Mayor Krap and Commissioner Campbell because anybody see what happens to those leaves when they don't get picked up in the street? They turned into some black gook that smells to high heaven. And, you know, speaking as one who goes and sweeps the streets, as does Commissioner Campbell, you know, it's unfair to those residents that want to get it done and can't get it done because there's cars parked in the street. And in many cases, there are alley, there is alley parking and many of the homes have other ways to park. It's really the rentals that we really get stuck with a lot. And, you know, it, we have to, we're going to have to have some give and take on this thing with the residents so that we have a, it, it's for the residents. It's for your streets to get cleaned and plowed correctly or plowed, you know, completely. If we were going to be able to sweep them every week, then this might be okay. But we're probably not. So we need to know what the realistic schedule is and be able to post that somewhere that on, that we, you know, you can expect it.
I also think people need to also understand that it would not be parking, no parking for the entire day of your garbage day. The idea is that the greater majority, the people that are impacted by this are at work. So it's a, you know, nine to three kind of situation, or an eight to three kind of situation. Because they, it wouldn't be that you have, you don't have overnight parking or you don't, I mean, it's, that's the idea, is it's a workday type of.
Correct. I mean, there has to be, there's always going to be a point where the cars have to get off the street if the street sweeper, the snowplow is coming down.
Yeah.
It, it, there's no other way to sweep the street or plow the snow.
So I would concur that we need a workshop because I think we completely overlooked sitting down and talking about the possibilities. I know before we talked about the fact that there are very limited staff in the DPS and that's one of the reasons we're not sweeping, you know, street sweeping as often. And I, I think that, um, sitting down with Mr. Wood after he talks with his staff and sees what other options are viable. But to tell me that I can't park on my street in front of my home from seven to four, that, that, that don't fly with me. You know, I, I don't go to work until, you know, quarter to eight. I'm not going to run out there and park, where am I going to park my car?
Probably in your driveway.
Yeah. But the house next door to me, the house across the street from me, they have three cars. The house directly catty-corner across from me, and these are residents, they're not rentals. They have four.
We need to come up with a solution. Because at some point in time, those cars are going to have to get moved to clean the street. It, it, it's just a given.
Like Don said, one side of the street in the evening, the other side in the morning. There's options.
That, that's why I concur that we need to have a workshop and give Mr. Wood some input into this discussion.
So does somebody want to, or do we want to, we just make a motion to table, correct?
I make a motion to table this discussion until we can have a workshop to discuss on-street parking.
Support.
Support.
Does anyone have any further questions, discussions? Roll call, please.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Can we have the workshop soon? I mean, we, we need to have some more, sorry, but we need to have these workshops.
I think you've already got workshops scheduled at the next three meetings. So do you want to put this in, in place of one of the other ones and move something else back?
Well, we'll see what that calendar looks like, but then maybe we add it on the fourth meeting.
Yeah, we won't do leaf cleaning until fall anyway.
Okay. Good? Okay. Sorry. Carry on. Roll call.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
Goodnow?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Krap?
Yes.
Menzner?
Yes.
All right. Moving on to much less controversial, agenda nine F, purchases and payments of invoices.
Move purchases and payment and invoices as presented.
Support.
Does anybody have any, oh, questions or comments? Hearing done. Roll call, please.
Campbell?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
Goodnow?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Krap?
Yes.
Menzner?
Yes.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Okay. Agenda item 10, consent agenda?
Move approve consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Support.
Roll call, please.
Fournier?
Yes.
Goodnow?
Yes.
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Craft?
Yes.
Menter?
Yes.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Agenda Item 11, City Managers Report, Mr. Johnson.
Okay, COVID, our numbers are still going down. We're at our lowest level since about March 25th of 2020. Everyone is aware that we had to cancel the fireworks last week because of the weather conditions. We had a backup date scheduled, but the, which was the next night, the weather forecast for both Friday and Saturday and the actual weather for both Friday and Saturday was not suitable for doing the fireworks. Zambelli's principal concern was with wind more so than with rain. They can tolerate a little bit of rain, but with high wind conditions, the shells would blow as much as several hundred yards and end up coming down over neighborhoods rather than coming down in the open area. They will be rescheduling it as soon as they can. Social District, the Oasis Social District opened on July 1st. At the present, we've just got Abebo and Cellar 104 able to provide drinks in special cups which may be taken out of their buildings as long as you remain in the district. A number of people responded to an invitation from Phil Gilchrist. We had a group that met at Cellar 104 to sort of christen the district. We did run into several other groups of people in town that were there, even though it was a relatively slow night being a Thursday. Building and Trade Inspection Services, the city entered into an agreement with SafeBilt to provide a building official plan review, Building Mechanical, Electrical and Plumbing Inspection Services, that was effective July 1st. We have a new building official, his name is Carlton Witsett. He oversees all of building mechanical, electrical and plumbing inspections and plan review. He's actually here considerably more than the, the other contractor was. And SafeBilt is very into using technology to provide better service and they are working on updating us in how we handle permits, how the inspectors will handle entering data, and they're talking about putting a scanner on the front counter so when somebody comes in, they can scan the existing permit and bring it up immediately. And do they have anything else? Future agendas? We have, of note, we have a work session on 8/2, which we do need to keep, which is to discuss the KNE Electric Brownfield application. The one on the 16th could be traded out, which was for strategic planning. And we can put this one in its place and move that one back.
Sounds.
What about the strategic plan? What was that?
Just did.
We can move that back. We also have one on 7/19, which is the one on code enforcement process.
Yeah. The strategic plan was to just go over it and basically do our annual review of it, you know, are these goals the goals we want? If not, are we changing them?
You want to move everything down and move the parking issue into the 19th?
I think I'd like to keep code enforcement where it's at.
Yeah, code enforcement definitely sooner than later.
Okay.
So I think, we have to keep the KNE Electric one.
Yeah, that one, that one we need to because it ties into dates with other parts of the process.
Is there a consensus that the strategic, we'll swap the strategic plan, we'll move that one? Since this one's a little more time sensitive?
Yes.
Okay. Looks like you have a consensus on that. Okay. Does anybody have any questions or comments for Mr. Johnson? No, okay, moving on. This is the second portion of the public participation. The public has the option to address the commission. We'll first, we'll first address the in-person public participation and then we'll go to the Zoom meeting. And so if you would like to address the commission, we ask that you give us your full name, your residential address, and you abide by our two-minute rule. Is there anyone in person who would like to address the commission?
Change my topic to the parking situation that you're talking about. You have to take into consideration Bain Street, Clinton River Drive, we have a problem with the post office parking in the neighborhood, so how are you going to handle that? They start parking as early as eight o'clock in the morning and they don't leave sometime to eight o'clock at night. So that is an issue. We've been fighting this issue for some years now because like you say, our streets didn't get plowed, only straight down the middle, and only if there was a holiday for the post office where, you know, our streets got cleaned or if they did it on a Saturday or something like that. So that's one issue I don't think that's been taken into consideration. Also, to fight that problem, they put up signs on Meadle Street and Clinton River Drive, they put up no parking signs. So those people can't park on one side of their street and the other side they can, but they can't because the post office is parking there. So, you know, there are issues and concerns that you need to take into consideration when you consider this parking whatever.
Is there anyone else?
August Barnes, 291 Jones Street, Mount Clemens. It's so awesome to see all of you in person again. No unmute, unmute, unmute. Um, I, I've been sitting here listening and I've had the distinct privilege of sitting with the former commission as they wrote the marijuana ordinance, right? And I will agree with Mr. Kell, he and I have no discussions of any of this. Okay, so I want to make that very clear. But this commission has a responsibility to this community. The former commission is the one that wrote the medical ordinance. Now you are a new commission and you have to make some decisions about how recreational marijuana is going to impact our community and the long-term effects of what that's going to do, both positive and negative. Personally, I'm in favor of expanding the marijuana ordinance and bringing in more businesses because to Commissioner Fournier and Commissioner Minter's point, as a longtime Mount Clemens city resident, one thing I see is that every time I open my tax bill, I'm paying for a school district that I can't send my kids to and I got a bunch of different bills that I'm paying these exorbitant taxes for living in the city of Mount Clemens. Here we have businesses chomping at the bit to come in and pay fifteen, sixteen, eighteen dollars a square foot to get into our downtown business district to open these marijuana businesses. You guys have a decision to make here. You just opened this Oasis Social District where people can walk around and drink, but we're fighting to keep marijuana out of our downtown. I just don't see what the conversation is. During strategic planning last year, you had all these conversations about the direction of the city and what direction we're selling this boat in. It's time that you guys start making some decisions on this and stop kicking this can down the road. It has been three years I've attended these meetings and watched this marijuana conversation get kicked down the road. Somebody's going to have to step up and make a decision and hopefully you make it so. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the commission in person?
You're inspiring. I have Beverly Bishop from 54 Kendrick and I agree with him, and I'm a pharmacist, and I have seen marijuana for the last 55 years and all of the rhetoric and all the anxiety, and I say it's a great business, let's get in it. It's the alcohol that destroys our families.
Okay. Is there anyone else who would like to address? Okay, we'll go to the Zoom call.
Angela is back.
Okay. Angela, do you have audio this time?
Yes, I do. Can you hear me?
Yep, I can, go ahead.
All right, wonderful. I'm at 59 Hubbard Street. I am a household of four, soon to be five, drivers. Granted, snow emergencies always have been a challenge. My household takes care of our front when it comes to leaves and such, but I know that moving, having an ordinance would really be difficult for my family and I'm sure other families within the neighborhood. So just a suggestion, I know that you're tabling this for right now to a degree, but having garbage, you know, talking to our garbage pickup company about east and west roads and north and south roads, streets so that it's less of an inconvenience for the residents, that our challenge with parking like that might be something to look into. I do have an alley, but my alley is also shared with the people on the street behind me, Farron Street, which is a one-way, and they I think have very limited parking as well. So, I mean, we, we all do face these challenges and I do hope that there is a resolution, but I also know that I'm not the only family within the community that has multiple people that live here and drive. So, and that's really all I have to say. I, I hope there's a resolution and it's something that will benefit the city as well as the community and the residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, go ahead.
Shannon.
Shannon?
Shannon.
Go ahead, Shannon.
Hi, this is Shannon Panetta. I'm at 33 Lowick and I would like to speak briefly about the ban for street parking. Really, I just have a couple of questions for consideration for the workshop that's coming up. One question would be, how would residents handle when they are hiring people to maintain their properties or landscaping companies? How would they handle that in terms of, you know, it would be maybe a deterrent for those coming out to maintain your home or landscape your property? I know my landscaper is on the street virtually all day doing multiple properties and I really wouldn't want them to have a consequence and so maybe they could be considered having some sort of permit, but those that are irregular, I think that would just have to be considered. And the reason why I thought about this is because I have some upcoming work that's going to take several months at my home and I wouldn't want those contractors to be ticketed. And the only other comment I wanted to make was that, you know, maybe the hundred dollar fine is a little hefty in this community, just something, just some food for thought. And also I was concerned about visitors to homes and being ticketed inadvertently and how to avoid that. I guess we really just don't want to deter people from accessing our city. And lastly, garbage days vary throughout the city, so I, I feel like there would be, need to be some sort of communication in, in terms of when the garbage companies are coming out, on which days and which neighborhoods, you know, mapping that out somehow because I'm not clear, other than my neighborhood, when the garbage is being picked up in other neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else on Zoom?
Patrick Baldwin.
Okay. Patrick, go ahead. Patrick, we can barely hear you.
I'm sorry. I'm still driving, that's, that's breaking the park.
You're not, you're not coming in clear at all for us. He's muted himself? Okay. Is there anyone?
I'm sorry? Zoom and drive it.
Yeah, zooming and driving. Hazardous. Is there anyone, is there anyone else that wants to speak to the commission at this point? On Zoom? No, okay. Do we want to see if Patrick can pull over? Did he unmute himself? No, okay. All right, we're going to go ahead and move on to Commissioner comments at this time. Commissioner Campbell.
The other thing I want to talk about is the parking, I mean, all these concerns, I think they need to be addressed at the workshop. One of the things that I've heard over and over again is about not having a driveway. Well, on my block, the first, between church and CAS, the first five houses off of church, three of them don't have a driveway, and I talked to all three of them and they're all in favor of some type of an ordinance that is going to ultimately allow the streets to be cleaned at some point. So we do need to address this and hopefully at the workshop, we can alleviate some of these concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Hammond?
No comments.
Thank you. Commissioner Fournier?
With respect to the parking situation, I know this, this is clearly a much hotter topic than I ever expected it to be, but we do need to have, as Mayor Crop said, we do need to have a solution to it. We've talked about it for several years right now and we get those complaints and, and it's usually the citizens that are complaining, they, you know, they move their cars. It's the ones that don't that cause a problem for the other ones. So I, I'm sure we'll be able to come up with something at this workshop. We will come up with something at this work session. The other, as I say to all residents, I was talking to many of my neighbors recently and about a couple of things that are going on in code enforcement when we have that workshop, I encourage all of you that are, have complaints or have issues with things that are going on, please make your voices heard at that workshop. And that workshop is going to be on the?
19th.
19th?
Just close my screen.
Yeah, 19th at six.
Watch for that date. I hope everyone's enjoying their summer. Thank you.
19th. Commissioner Goodoff?
I'd like to concur with Commissioner Campbell and Commissioner Fournier. I do agree that we will come up with some productive plan moving forward as far as the issue in the streets. I also wanted to concur with Commissioner Minter about not raising, I know we've always talked about it, about raising the wire taxes, I don't really agree with that at all. Some of the people that I've spoken to, we all know that even though people have had their shots, the vaccinations, we have limited income, no income, and questionable income for a lot of people in Mount Clemens. And to put another burden on the citizens of Mount Clemens, I don't think that's fair. Thank you.
Commissioner Voorhees?
Yes, I, I would first of all say that I, I have a new hero. You know, growing up it was, you know, Roy Rogers, but Josh Ringstad is, is my hero. He is a fireman with the city of Mount Clemens and during the pandemic let his hair grow and he turned around and we had a hair cutting party that the mayor was at and he donated that to Maggie's Wigs for Kids and I must say that they must have had eight little sprains probably.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Six, yeah, yeah.
But it was, it was, it was great. Also, it was great for the city of Mount Clemens because we got a lot of great publicity. I would like to thank Nick Maniselli from the Channel 4 news team. He was very, very pro-Mount Clemens and we'd like to, we appreciate that. Also, on a sad note, we lost a longtime city employee, volunteer fireman, and just, you know, president, past president of the Goodfellows and the old crowd, Bernie Welhausen. He was 95 years old, lived on Canfield, had a large family, but just, just a great guy. So we, we extend our sympathies to the Welhausen family. And with that, once a Clemite, always a Clemite.
Thank you. Commissioner Minter?
I too think Josh Ringstad is truly awesome and what I like to say is everything goes better when the MCFD is on the scene, everything. And I also want to thank Josh Alger. He's a long-term resident of Mount Clemens, he was a past volunteer firefighter, but Josh Alger has put on, he took it over from Jill Hansinger, but he has put on the Seminole Hills Bike Parade every 4th of July. This year, you know, Ruleys and the fire department were there and the turnout was bigger than ever. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to make it this year, but I think that things like this, events like this are what make us a community and are what make us better as a people, better as neighbors. And so I really want to thank Josh for continuing this tradition. And all the residents, including Sean Andruwski, who came out in his little golf cart, I saw multiple pictures of that, people really enjoyed it, but it was a great event in a great city. Thank you.
I am going to resume coffee talks since we, since all of the capacity restrictions have been lifted from our local restaurants. So you can join me July 13th for our first in-person coffee talk again. I'm looking forward to seeing everyone. I'm looking forward to seeing everyone. July 13th, 9:30 a.m. at John's Family Grill will be the first coffee talk. So if you want to hear about what's happening in Mount Clemens and ask questions and just share a cup of coffee with some neighbors and get to know some people, again, join us at John's. We, I want to, I see a lot of talk on Facebook about the rescheduling of the fireworks. So we ask for your patience. We promise that we will put it, we will practically skywrite it when we have the date. But if you continue to call City Hall about the fireworks, you're probably going to still hear the same message until we get that date. And we're waiting for Zambelli's to, which obviously they were very busy this last weekend. So we're waiting for them to confirm and solidify the date. You have the date? You don't have the date?
I have the date, but I have multiple vendors and people I'm speaking to.
It's, it's very close to being announced.
By the end of tomorrow, I should know.
We will, it's very close to knowing the date. We promise, again, it will, you, you can find it on our City of Mount Clemens Facebook page, Instagram page, and Twitter feed. You can also find it on the Downtown Mount Clemens Facebook, Instagram, and Twitter feed. I'm sure my mayor page will have it. I'm sure everybody else who's on this board will share that post. I'm sure it will be on the, Patrick will put it on the digital sign out at Cass and Gross, Cass and, oh, Jesus, Cass and Crocker. And Jesus Christ, everybody gets the point, I hope. So please, just hang on and I promise we're not taking away the fireworks. And it's not this coming Friday, it is not. But on that note, what you can enjoy this coming Friday is our downtown concert series, Uptown Concert Series. My gosh, you would think I would get this. The Uptown Friday Night Concert Series returns to the Fountain Stage at, what time?
Seven to nine.
Seven to nine p.m., which of course is located in the Mount Clemens Oasis. So you can, you can go to Cellar 104 or Abebo and purchase an alcoholic beverage and you can enjoy the Friday Night Concert Series. Or you cannot have an alcoholic beverage, whichever you prefer. So I want to thank everyone who did come out and enjoy the Oasis with us. It was a fun night and we had a great time. And I think that it's going to be something that's really positive in Mount Clemens. And we, we hope to, I thank you for approving that because I think it's going to be something that's really, really a good thing for our businesses. With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Support.
We all support it.
It's unanimous. I said, all those in favor? Oppose?
I kind of oppose.